Start the regular council meeting in City Starbucks for February 12th and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You can call a roll, please, Joan.
Mayor Swenson.
Here.
Councilor Gorder.
Here.
Councilor Tate.
Here.
Councilor Bockel.
Here.
Councilor Christensen.
Here.
Okay. All right, the first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. I don't know if there's any questions or discussion or anything on the agenda.
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Gorder to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Councilman Tate. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is Nick Kuss from Woodseth. So I guess talk about the 2020 road project, Sean.
Yep. Hi, I'm Nick Kuss with Woodseth. Just a quick update on the 2020 road project. We have the numbers pretty well together, so if we can set up a meeting sometime, perhaps next week, we could go through it with you, Joan and Randy, and start the process. And then Randy had requested some information on the lighthouse, so I got that to him. If you need any assistance with the lighthouse project moving forward, we're available to do any piece of that that you might need help with. And that's all I got, any questions? Okay.
Just that.
Yep, thanks.
Thanks, Nick.
Next item on the agenda is Robert Severson. He notified us that he's not coming tonight, and so move on to the next item, which is Austin Enstead from 410 East 7th Street to discuss an alley issue, so.
All right, so I've never done this before, but just wanted to talk about the alleyway there on 410. It doesn't go all the way through. We've had neighbors in the back parking kind of right next to that fire hydrant that's back there. Makes me a little nervous. And I, for those who don't know, I drive tow truck, and I usually back my truck into my yard, and I've had complaints from my other neighbors, the one right at the end of that alleyway, that had blocked the alleyway. So I was just proposing if we could make it accessible on both sides, easier for snowplowing, easier for me to get in my yard, and that kind of, kind of thing, so. That's all I was, talk about that. And then truck parking, sometimes I do pull a trailer, 34-foot trailer with my tow truck, and obviously can't park that on the street. So I was just curious if the city could possibly help out with finding a place to park, anywhere.
I'm just wondering, why can't you park on the street?
So I've actually talked to the police department about that. It's over 26,000 pounds, so it's considered a commercial vehicle. Just the tow truck is under the 26,001 pounds, so they consider that as a passenger vehicle. So that would be the only stipulation there, I guess. And the tow truck with the trailer is approximately 60, 65 feet in length, so it's about the same length of a full-size semi. So, just trying to keep the peace with the neighbors, basically. So, I don't know if there's anything we could do with that. And then I do know to my east, there's also another semi that parks over there, too. I don't know if he's had the same issues, but there's a couple of semi drivers in town that have no place to park, so. Just gonna bring that to attention, so. That's it.
I don't know, Randy, I don't know if you have any input on that?
Well, the alley, there's kind of a waterway through the end of it, plus that fire hydrant is kind of where the alley should be. So if you did have the alley there, that hydrant would be way too close and would be getting hit, I'm afraid.
Okay.
Isn't that hydrant, when you drive in, kind of right in front where the alley should be?
Yeah, it's kind of off to the right-hand side, a little bit, north side.
Just a little ways off to the right.
Yeah.
It wasn't really set up to be driven through when the hydrant was set there.
Yeah, because the other concern I had, too, was that the traffic does, so try to drive back through there, and we'll just drive around the neighbors' vehicles any parks back there, so if that's, like you said, back there, is really the way to block that off, so cars don't drive through, or? Not really?
Really, there's a curve on the one side.
Is it possible to maybe come a little bit around the hydrant, or to put up some steel posts on either side of the hydrant to protect it?
I, well, I guess without looking at it, I think the alley would end up going in just driveway to kind of get around the hydrant. There's a deep waterway that goes through there, I mean, it would take a lot of putting in probably culverts and filling it in, and I guess, I don't know, without taking a closer look, but that's, that's why that's there. Plus, there's utilities in there, I don't know how deep they are, and the telephone might have a manhole or something. I know the telephone has some stuff.
Yeah, I know the city water line is back in there, too.
Yeah, our water line's hooked to the hydrant.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I know, yeah, like you said, there's a slough kind of on the north side over there, too, so.
Out of curiosity, for garbage collection, then, do the garbage trucks come in and then back out to get out of there, or how does that work with the new change?
Yes. I've actually set up a camera in the back, just so I can see what goes on all back there, and garbage trucks usually try to get to my place there on the corner, and the alleyway is really narrow, so I have to put mine over on the other side. Not a big deal, but I know for the little snow that we had this year, plow trucks were driving all the way in and then having to back back out, too, so just figured if we could make it a little easier for everybody.
I think, you know, we could probably look into it a little further, and what do you think, Randy? Look into it a little further, see if, see what?
Yeah, we could do a little research on it, see if it's, if it's possible.
I think the city will be asking you to clean up your lot, though.
Yeah, that's fair.
You've got a lot of tree branches, a lot of stuff in the back.
Yeah, yeah.
We need that cleaned up by the spring, so.
Absolutely.
So, but we'll, we'll see what we can do on the alley, but.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, as for, as for parking, though, he would be able to maintain his trailer and truck on the road for at least 24 hours at a time, right, without having to move it?
Why?
Because of the weight?
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's a temporary solution to parking. I don't know if the city can offer any permanent resolution to, you know, parking, other than talking to other business owners or something, so.
Well.
That's all I have.
I think you could need to rent out space in the industrial lot, one of the, one of the sold lots, for any of the truck drivers, they could rent space to park their truck and trailer.
You're talking about the industrial part?
Yep.
I think that'd be a good idea, to give them the option to be able to do that, and obviously nominal rates, you know, nothing extraordinary, but something to kind of keep the city streets clear for, you know, people that are having trailers and tractors parking on the city streets can have that option instead, so I would be inclined to agree with Councilman Tate on that.
Well, I guess I'd make a motion that we table it for now, and, and look at it again, maybe next month or whatever, so.
I'll second.
Okay. So we have a motion by myself to table this issue for now, and seconded by Councilman Gorder. Any further discussion or comments? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Next on the agenda is update on the lighthouse project, but I think I'll wait until we get to the water sewer and see what our bid is from Ferguson, so. After that, the police department, monthly report, and I don't think we have any, what do you hear from the police department?
No, but we do have something to talk about on there.
Okay.
On the part-time wages, those were never talked about when we changed the union pay scale, so Chief Johnson has proposed to start the part-timers at the $30 an hour rate, and he would like to move them up along with the other union steps. He was going to present this, but so it would be. So I don't know if this is something you want to talk more with him about, but.
What is the current hourly rate?
23, 24.
Yeah, this doesn't have anything to do with how many times they were on duty or?
No, it was tied to years of service.
So they could be on our rolls, but maybe haven't served, or?
Right. There's no specification right now for so many hours per year, or shifts per year, or anything like that.
Is this what the union is recommending, or is this?
No, they're not union employees, so we don't need to follow any of the union recommendations. He was just tying them to that.
I guess, me personally, I'd like to, to hear what his explanation is for this, instead of just going ahead and approving it.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, he's got to have some reasoning behind this, I would think. Well, maybe I'm wrong, but I guess I'd like to hear it from him.
Okay.
I agree.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we table this for the part-time law enforcement, until we can meet with Chief Johnson.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Gorder to table this issue for now, and seconded by Councilman Tate. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Next, I'd like to call on Randy Peterson, our water and sewer supervisor.
All right, first of all, I met with Ferguson Brothers Excavating to kind of look at the south side of the Marina, where we'd like to place the lighthouse, kind of explain to them what we'd like to kind of hopefully see done, and have them give me a quote for it. Kind of a, a brief overview, it's, it would be kind of about a 25, or a 20-foot wide path that they kind of subcut out, a couple feet probably, depending on the elevation and haul-in. Probably about three, four feet of fill from our pit. They'd have to take some trees down out on the end, so that we'd have a place to put the lighthouse, and it'd hopefully be visible. I did get the quote from them, it was for $24,045. We would have to, it'd be, the work would be pending kind of a variance from the city to stay in compliance with our ordinances and that kind of stuff.
Did we hear from DNR on that?
I talked to Emily today about it, kind of talked over some of our ideas. Definitely going to take kind of some meeting and hashing some things out, getting approval on that also.
Is there a difference between the variance for the height and for the light, or something?
She had some recommendations from, it was an email that we got from WSN.
Is any supplemental stuff that's put on your table?
That was some items she had when she was working with WSN.
Ralph Hansen's is on top, and Emily's is stapled to it.
So I also talked to Ralph with Pope County to make sure everything was all right with them. He said that it falls under our jurisdiction, so they don't have any issues with it, or, or anything like that. So that's when I called Emily and kind of talked to her, I didn't get a whole lot of time to, to talk to her, meet with her down there yet, but hopefully we can get something worked out.
Okay.
So I don't know if we can approve the quote, kind of pending the variance and the DNR approval and everything, just in case we do get the approval to, to kind of move with it, that they can start work.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd just like to make a couple of comments. One is we have to get this project done, or we lose some funding from FEMA if it isn't done this year. Second, I just wanted to mention that the council set a budget on this, and the costs seem to balloon or skyrocket way past our budget and so forth, so whatever we can do to get the project done, I appreciate it, so, yeah. I, I suppose we should, you know, have a motion to approve the bid and to set a hearing for the variance, Joan, you think?
Mm-hmm.
I'll make the motion to approve the bid, and pending the variance and discussions with the DNR.
I'll, I'll second. That, that's for Ferguson Brothers Excavating?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay. So I have a motion by Councilman Tate to approve the Ferguson bid and to set a, a date for our next, hopefully for our next council meeting, to have a public hearing on the variance for the light, and seconded by Councilman Gorder. Did I get all that right?
Yep.
Okay. Is there any other discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Kind of quiet over here. Is that a yea or a nay?
It was a nay.
Huh?
It was a yea.
Okay. Anything else?
And that's all I have, thank you.
Thanks, Randy.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the fire department. I don't know if you're speaking for Doug, or?
I didn't leave anything for anybody.
What's that?
I guess Doug didn't leave anything to bring to the council, really, I guess if you want updates, I don't know, at the last meeting, if he let you know that both trucks are in service now, the new tanker and the grass rig from the DNR, so, with the new, new used. Only one thing I know, we had a question on, Doug and I were talking, did you guys ever decide on that public safety aid grant, how that would be distributed throughout, being it's for fire and police? That's 60,000, was anything ever decided on that?
I understand Doug is on vacation, or?
Yeah, he's coming back tonight, actually.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I haven't had a chance to talk to him or anything, but.
Okay, I know he just mentioned it, and that's the only one thing, I guess he mentioned about bringing it up, so.
Yeah.
But I'm just seeing if you guys have talked about it, or?
From all indications, we, you know, didn't violate any state rules or anything, so.
For?
For the distribution, so, or the use of that, those funds, so.
So the use has already been made up, what's going to be done with it, or?
What's that?
Is the use for the 60,000's already been made up where it's going, or, and put into the fund, or is it going to be allocated to the fire?
Yes or no?
Asking me?
I talked to Joan, and as far as what I understand is, right now, it's in the general fund, but it can be dispersed wherever we want to put it, but it's in the general fund.
Because I mean, we have safety stuff that we need, too, and I guess we'd like to have a chance at it, I mean, it's specifically states in there for fire, rescue, and emergency services, and so we follow in that, and, and other towns, and I talked to Paul Anderson, he said other towns are doing that, too, they're giving some to the fire departments, too, to use for funds for equipment, for safety. So I guess we'd like to have the same chance if we can.
Yeah, I think as the budget was presented and approved, it's all in the general fund right now, so, but like Chris said, you know, there's options to transfer money.
Yeah, we can disturb it, because we never discussed exactly where it all was going, it just was put in the general fund, but we can take it out and move it wherever we need to.
Okay, I guess, any other questions?
Do you know if Paul Anderson was talking about federal funds or state funds?
Nope, it was this actual, the public safety one, because I specifically asked him, I did get a correction on that, it was something else, I was thinking of is for the percentage split, but he specifically said, yeah, it's for fire and police, because like I said, he's talked to other towns, and he said that they've given theirs to police and fire also, not just one entity, so.
Okay.
But he said there is a lot of, well, it shows right here, I got some of the rules, too, from the League of Minnesota, that there is some major rules that they don't want you to use it for certain things, so.
Okay. Okay. So this is something that'll come up in the future, or?
Oh, it's totally up to you guys, it's all been appropriately distributed, but if you want to change that, you can.
Okay. Any comments and input, or input from the council?
I think we should probably table it until, you know, you get a chance to talk to Doug about it, and see what specifically they're going to use that money for.
Well, and I've only been on the council for a year now, but I mean, you know, one of the recent expenses right here is for training at Alec Tech and stuff like that, so I mean, there are, there are other ways to go about, you know, paying for that and training and stuff, so if the fire department ever is requesting something, we're always willing to listen to what you guys are looking for as well, too, so a presentation on what you guys would like to see would help us.
Yeah, because I mean, a lot of it's, you know, it can be used for equipment, and most of the equipment that we've been buying ourself has been through fundraising, and so we haven't had to take city money to pay for that, where other cities you probably would be, so, because we don't have the chance to get the extra funds ever for this.
Okay.
So, I guess that's why we're approaching you, the equipment is some cheap, so.
So did you make that a motion, or?
Yeah, I'm making a motion that we table that dispersment until we, we can hear from Doug on what he, what he wants to use that for.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Gorder to table the issue for now, and seconded by Councilman Tate. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Next on the agenda is the budget comparison reports for the fourth quarter of 2023.
Yeah, I put these in here to take a look and see if you had any questions, we're having our auditors do our budget presentation next month, so I'm not going to say a lot about it, because they're going to have the whole presentation in March, so. If you have any questions, feel free to give me a call or stop by.
Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda is the airport committee in Buickens.
Thank you. Finally, we've got something to talk about. I think every meeting for the last six months, I've said we've got this coming sometime, but we finally got some action this month, so I'll kind of start out with the airport committee, you know, we talked about forming a more formal airport commission of guys that are interested in flying, or are interested in the airport down there, their pilots, and to kind of promote the airport, get some activity, get some people in town through the airport. So I've got three names, probably Joan has them listed, them here, in your packet there, I'm sure, plus myself, and the three, Ted and Jason and myself have rent hangar space down there right now, and Craig Lindblad is a resident of the North Shore, Jason is a resident of the South Shore, Craig has experience on the Benson Airport Commission down there, Jason is the FBO, the fixed base operator, so they have some expertise, and I think that's valuable, that we can start putting some things together. One of the things that we have to approach is, when people are interested in maybe putting up hangar, or finding a place to put a, their plane in a hangar, we don't have any places, but we can creatively come up with something, and I think this, this group of people can probably put something together and make a recommendation to the council, how we can proceed with that in the future, so we have something tangible that says, hey, if you want to build a hangar, this is how you do it. So hopefully we can do that, and I think these guys were all excited when I talked to them, right away they all just said, yep, I'm with you, I'll be there, and we'll do this for you, so. They're excited to get on board. The next thing, if you've been down there, we've got a couple of buildings, Gary donated a little garage, and, and we built another bigger one down there. We're looking to get a, the next step that we need to do is get a courtesy car, so that when people do fly in, they can hop in the car and go where they need to go, whether they're coming downtown, if they need to go for parts somewhere close by, or if they're visiting somebody on the lake, or going golfing, or whatever, they got a courtesy car down there, they're more apt to come in and, and spend some time in town. So that's our, one of our last steps, we do, we did get bicyc- So that's our, one of our last steps. We do, we did get bicycles down there a couple of years ago, and the people just love them. They'll, they'll come in, and they'll grab a bike, and they'll go to the water's edge, they'll come downtown, you know, the bike trailer's right there, uh, they come and go. All the comments in the, in the guestbook are, are super about that, and we wanna keep that going. So we do have some transportation, but, uh, we need to get a little bit more, I think, to see how that goes. Um, that's the purpose of the, of the garage down there. And then the last one is, uh, the big one. We got a, uh, grant approval from MnDOT Aeronautics to purchase that skid loader and a, and a mower, a brush cutter on the front of it. Every year, or every other year, when we have an inspection from MnDOT, they always gig us on not having the cattails and the, um, willow trees cut down next to the airport. They need a clear space down there. They like to have a hundred and twenty-five feet off the center line, and we can't get close to that with the equipment that we have, because it's so soft in a lot of places, uh, we would just sink out of sight, so, um, we think that this skid loader on tracks, uh, will, for the majority of the season, will kinda float over some of that softer ground down there, and we'll be able to cut back those, um, the brush and the cattails that are a hazard, and actually be able to see some of the lights, uh, that, from the airplane when they come in, because after the cattails grow up, uh, during the summer, you can't see some of the, the runway lights even, so that's kinda the purpose of that. So that sounds like it'll be a ninety, ten, ninety percent state matching grant, ten percent local effort on that. Um, the money that, uh, the, the quote that we have will not get any higher than that, and we're gonna wait until next month, the, the, uh, final submission of the packet on our part isn't due until March thirty-first, so we're gonna see if possibly, uh, where we're buying this equipment from, they may, uh, we do have an incentive in March to where they could get a little bit less, and lower, the price could come down, but we'll, uh, see what happens with that. But regardless, it's gonna be a ninety, ten percent split. And of course, it'll, uh, it'll come with a snow bucket, or a utility bucket, so it could be used for other things down there. It's, it is supposed to be specifically used for airport purposes only, but of course, there's always snow removal and things that it could be used for down there.
Tom, I have a question.
Yes.
If, if we did go ahead and, and pursue this machine, would we have a place to store that at the airport?
Well, right now, I've got a garage down there. Um, I talked to Mike, I don't know about Randy, what you think. I did, I mentioned to Mike one time, he said, oh, we'll find a place for it, but he didn't really...
Will it fit in the garage?
Uh, yeah, I think so. I mean, it's a seven-foot door, it's, it's not that tall. So I'm, I mean, that, the bigger garage down there.
Is there room in a hangar, or is it yourself?
Yeah. It's hard to get under a wing at this point, um, you know, unless you put it in first and get it behind an airplane or something, but it would be nice to have it down there, so a person could trim up around the hangars and that, too, with the snow removal, you know, have it handy, or even around the AD building in the wintertime. Would eliminate some snow shoveling by hand, if you know what I mean. So, yeah, I, I think we'll find a place for it.
Thank you.
I think that's all I got. I think, uh, by the, like I said, the end, by the end of March, we need to have everything submitted, and we get the final approval, put the order in, and, uh, I talked to the salesman the other day, and he said, probably take a month or two for it to come, but any orders that are placed are get priority, so... That's where we're at. And hopefully, we get some more traffic this summer down there and keep the place moving.
Are you aware of any other grants available, like through FAA or anything like that, where?
See, we're just state-funded is all. We're not a federally approved airport. You know, we have to be, we have to be bigger, much bigger, and we have to have a certain amount of airplanes stationed at the airport to be eligible for federal money. Plus, we're too close to Glenwood, Morris, Benson, Alec. Um, like, we have to be like thirty miles from another federal airport in order to qualify.
Is Glenwood federal?
This is just state funds.
Is Glenwood a f- federal one, though?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. Yep. Yeah, I mean, they've, they've been writing us up on this report, you know, every, ever since I've been looking at the reports, as far as getting that brush cut down, so that's one of the main reasons they did fund it, because it's on that list of things to, to correct. And we're a small, we're under five thousand population, and we qualify a hundred percent for everything that they listed for qualifications, so it was kind of a no-brainer for them.
It is actually in the airport budget for 2024, for the ten percent of this equipment.
So do we need, need a motion on that to approve the?
Probably to, yeah, pursue it.
Okay, I, I'll make a motion that we, uh, pursue the purchase of this compact loader and prime bu- brush cutter, uh, that, that is to be funded ninety, ten, from the state of Minnesota DOT.
I'll second that.
It's not a compact loader, it's a seventy-four horse, three-twenty-five.
It says compact loader on the sheet here. I was just reading it off the paper.
It's not something that'll fit in your pocket.
No, I understand.
We have a motion by, from Council, Councilman Gorder to approve the purchase of the, uh, of the, uh, tracked, uh, skid loader and bush, bush cutter and, uh, mower.
I was gonna say, one more thing, that I, he told me that anything with seventy-five horse or motor, or more, that's a diesel, has to have DEF, which is an additive to the diesel nowadays, make a cleaner exhaust. That's why it's rated at seventy-four horse, so it does not require DEF. People like that. It does not require DEF, another expense.
Well, thank you, Tom.
Yeah.
Appreciate your work.
Yeah, I'm glad I could finally report something positive. Thanks.
Thanks. So we have a motion from Councilman Gorder, and a second from Councilman Tafe, uh, to go ahead with the purchase. Uh, any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next on the agenda is streets and parks and community center. I don't think we have anything... Issue, what's that?
Do you wanna get the, okay, to pay this?
Uh, yeah, for the airport, uh, yeah, we could, uh, address that. Uh, I think in your packet, there's a cost for the, uh, the materials for the garage, uh, that new, uh, bigger garage, and, uh...
Is that twenty twenty-four dash oh-seven, resolution twenty twenty-four oh-seven?
Yeah, and there's a, there's a...
Item B under the airport? That has this.
And that's also item twenty-six under the new business?
Uh, nope, that's something different. Sorry.
Oh, it's, uh, what was it, ninety-eight, uh?
That was the labor, and this is the materials? Yeah.
So labor was the K Builders one of sixty-four hundred?
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, I, I can make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh-seven for the labor of K Builders to construct a fourteen and a half by twenty-four-foot garage at the Starbuck Airport in the amount of sixty-four hundred dollars.
I think we're... Is that what we're looking at, Joan?
No, but that'll work. We, we have to do that, too.
I think we're looking at the materials cost, which is from Hoffman Building Systems in your packet, so...
You can have mine if you want.
Ninety-eight hundred, seventy-two dollars and fifty-five cents.
Joan, do you wanna finish this one first, and then go to the materials?
Sure.
Okay.
We can go ahead and finish that one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
What is that, seven?
Twenty-six here. We can... You have a motion and a second, so we just need to...
Oh, great.
Ask the council.
Okay, we have, uh, a motion by Mr. Gorder?
Christiansen.
No, Dane.
Dane, Dane.
Oh, okay. Uh, so we have a motion by Dane Christensen, Councilman Christensen, to approve resolution twenty twenty-seven dash oh-seven, uh, seconded by?
Mary.
Seconded by Balkal, and, uh, I don't know if there's any questions or further discussion on that. Otherwise, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
And now, back to the building supplies. I'll make the motion to approve the payment of nine thousand eight hundred seventy-two dollars and fifty-five cents.
I'll second. I'll second.
So we have a motion by, uh, Councilman Tafe to approve the, uh, the materials cost for the airport garage of ninety-eight hundred seventy-two fifty-five, uh, seconded by Councilman Gorder. Uh, is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, so... And I guess the next thing on the agenda is discussing, uh, raising the pay for election judges from thirteen dollars an hour to fifteen dollars an hour, and I don't know if you wanted to say anything, Joan, about that, or?
Um, just that it's hard, increasingly hard to find election judges to work, and we have three elections going on this year, so just to entice them a little bit more to come and help us out, um...
It doesn't really amount to that much...
No.
Money.
No, it doesn't.
So I, I guess I'd make a motion that we, uh, approve raising the election judges' pay from thirteen dollars an hour to fifteen dollars an hour.
I'll second that.
So a motion by Councilman Gorder to approve raising the pay for election judges from thirteen dollars to fifteen dollars an hour, seconded by Councilman Tafe. Uh, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Uh, next on the agenda is, uh, resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero-three, and that's the contract business with a council member, and I think, uh, is this something we do every year?
It, it is, yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero-three, contract business with a council member.
And I'll be abstaining.
Okay.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay. So I have a motion by, uh, Councilman Gorder to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero-three, contracting with a council member, uh, seconded by Councilman Christensen. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero-four, uh, resolution for the adoption of the Pope County All Hazard Mitigation Plan, and, uh, we've, uh... I don't know if there's any questions or discussion on that.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero-four.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Tafe to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero-four, uh, resolution for the adoption of the Pope County All Hazard Mitigation Plan, uh, seconded by Councilman Gorder. Uh, any further discussion, or? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Uh, next on the agenda is, uh, resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero-five, resolution to appoint election judges for the twenty twenty-four primary and general elections.
Um, question on that one, so backside, you have the list of the, uh, judges, all of those are previous people that have previously done this, correct?
Yes, and they have to be trained for this particular year.
So no, no additional training, or there is additional training involved for all, all of them?
Yes, mhm, there is.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero-five, to appoint election judges for twenty twenty-four primary and general elections.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Christensen to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero-five, resolution to appoint election judges for the twenty twenty-four primary and general elections, seconded by, uh, Councilman Tafe. Is there any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Uh, next on the agenda is resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero-six, accepting a, uh, a donation from Samuelson's for the police department, and, uh, I don't know if there's any questions or discussion on that.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero-six.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay. So I have a motion by Councilman, uh, Tafe to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero-six, uh, accepting the, uh, donation from Samuelson's for the, uh, police department, seconded by Councilman Tafe.
I, I made the motion, and...
Christensen, yeah. Tafe, okay. Motion by Councilman Tafe, and seconded by Councilman Christensen, okay. Uh, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next on the agenda is to approve a public hearing for a variance request to install a single-family well and septic, uh, drain field on parcel twenty-seven dash zero-five-nine-zero dash six-zero-zero, uh, submitted by Michael Nadeau and Andrea Nadeau. I don't know if there's any questions, uh, on that, for?
Has the planning and zoning looked at this?
They have. They, um, they did, and they, um, proposed that, um, we have the hearing, and they approve the idea.
Randy, are, is there any problem with the wellhead protection?
I called, uh, uh, the Department of Health and talked to them about it, with the, regarding the wellhead. Uh, they didn't have any concerns with it, uh, they just made a few recommendations, uh, that a licensed certified well driller, um, does the well according to code, and kind of the same as a septic, so...
Okay.
They were fine with it.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve, approve a pu- a public hearing for a variance request to install a single-family well and septic drain field on parcel number twenty-seven dash zero-five-nine-zero dash six hundred.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion by Councilman Gorder to approve a public hearing for a variance request to install a single-family well and septic drain field on parcel twenty-seven dash zero-five-nine-zero dash six-zero-zero, seconded by Councilman Tafe. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Uh, next item on the agenda is to approve resolution, uh, or, excuse me, next item on the agenda is to discuss installation of electricity at the new garage at Starbuck Airport. I think there's a, a quote or bid in there to...
Randy, have you worked with this jolt before?
Uh, they installed the underground at the city park for us after that storm that literally cracked.
Okay. And they're, they did an okay?
I think, isn't, isn't it Jolt that did the underground at the park?
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, they, they did, probably.
They were, you know, prompt in doing it, so it was in, ready for, I think it was Heritage Day, so, yeah, so...
There, are there any other bids, or is it just the one bid?
That's the only bid.
Okay.
Did we get a price from Mezner?
I guess I wasn't even aware of this, so... I guess I wasn't even aware of this, so I, I, I would have.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know. I was just going to say, you know, Gary's always been a supporter of the airport down there, and he's, I don't know if you all know that, but he's done a lot as far as helping with the garages and getting those things up, getting the cement in, and he's put a lot of his own time and effort into it. So we really appreciate that, kind of trying to keep things moving forward. This is kind of the last piece of the pie here, so I would offer to take and make a donation in the amount of that electricity bid. So if you want to approve that, it won't have to come out of your pocket. So.
Thank you.
I guess I'd like to express gratitude to Tom and Ann for their generous donation on the electricity installation at the new garage at the airport, and I would make a motion that we approve Jolt Electric's bid for $4,883.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Councilman Gorder to approve the Jolt Electric quote for electricity at the airport garages for a total of $4,883, seconded by Councilman Tafe. And I'd also like to express my appreciation for everything Tom does for not only the airport, but the chamber and a lot of other organizations, so. Thank you. Any further discussion or questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, last item on the agenda is to discuss the sale of the old city equipment. And Joan, maybe you want to update the council on what's, what's for sale or what's available?
Randy has got better idea.
We have the, the old Case tractor that we used to mold the airport with. There's the old sanding truck. We have the old one-ton city dump truck that we need to sell, and then there's the Super Tanker fire truck and the old grass rig fire truck. So it was five trucks.
I know in general discussion amongst ourselves here, I, I know we, after the meeting, some of us discussed the possibility of having Zeal Dorf do an online auction on that. That, that way, you know, it's fair to anybody that can bid on it, and we're not being, you know, we're not, I guess it's open to anybody. We're not prejudiced at anybody bidding on it at that point.
I will mention that on the Super Tanker, we need to get a title for that. Unless the fire department has it somewhere, we do not, so can't sell that right away until we can get the title.
Can you get a duplicate title?
We can get that. We checked with over in Glenwood, but it'll take just a little bit of time.
Randy, if we did go that route, would we need to have somebody haul the, the stuff that's not drivable down?
I did talk to Chase about hauling the old sand truck and the tractor. He had a truck that he figured he'd get both of them on in one load. He figured it'd be about 300 bucks to haul it down there.
So he's hauling it to Benson, then? Is that what?
Yep, that'd be taking it to Benson.
And then, doesn't the auctioneer get a percentage?
I, I called them also. It was eight percent, being we had multiple items that were likely over $1,000. They said it would be eight percent.
Anybody else have any ideas?
Well, I saw Zeal's reference as a consignment sale, that everything has to be submitted by the end of February.
It's February 23rd.
Yeah.
It's when it has to be there, and you need a title and description and drop the item off there.
So the only problem really is that?
Tanker.
Super tanker that we don't have the title for, or not sure where it is?
And somebody mentioned that I think they have another one of them coming up in April also. I guess I didn't call them, but I guess Casey had mentioned, Casey sold a lot of stuff with them. He said he thought there was another one coming up in April, too.
Maybe we should hold off till we see if we can get the title, and if there's another auction in April, would that be?
I, I didn't check with them. I don't know. This is just what I've kind of heard from Casey had mentioned it, but I did not check with Zeal's door coming down.
We, well, we could get the other four down there.
Yeah.
So.
So if we make a motion to approve having them taken down there with, and if we get the title for the Super Tanker within that timeframe, approve it, otherwise the tanker would have to go on a different one in April. We'd have time to research that then.
Do we have quotes on the values of the, all the items in question, or no? My concern is if we bring it down to auction, auction and it goes significantly less than what we could get.
I, I don't have, I think we've got one on.
It sells for what it sells.
Yeah. I, I did get a rough quote from Micels on the tanker, and they thought it would be worth around $15,000. That's the only one that I got a quote on.
Would you say 16?
Can we set a minimum? Do you know? I don't know.
I, I guess I'm not sure. I would just say what they bring, they bring.
Be done with it?
I know it gets, I got an email on it today, whenever you register for any other auctions, you get an email on every upcoming auction. I got an email today on this one that is, get your stuff in and they're going to have it, so it gets a lot of publicity.
So if one of the firemen was interested in one of the pieces, they wouldn't be prohibited from bidding on the auction themselves, then?
If anybody can.
Okay. Then I, I don't, I think that's the best way to avoid a conflict of interest. And what we get is what we get, and ignore the, the reserve price.
So do they start the bidding? So everybody gets a chance to bid on it for a day, or what is?
It's an online auction.
Online, it goes for about a week or so.
Oh, okay. All right.
It does start at zero.
And they don't end until people stop it and have it.
Right.
It's like a three-month one.
I guess we have a motion.
I'll, I'll make the motion to sell the five pieces of equipment on the Zeal Dorf auction, if the tanker has the title in time, if not, bringing it down to the next auction.
I'll second.
So I have a motion by Councilman Tafe to approve the sale of the five vehicles of the cities at, at the auction, and seconded by Councilman Tafe or Councilman Gorder. Is that right? And any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. And I believe that concludes our meeting for tonight.
I'll make a motion. We adjourn our regular meeting.
We have a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.